Is there anything to report from the closed session, Steve?
Good evening, Mayor. The City Council is in closed session this evening on two items: Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Clerk Administrator, and Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. And there's no action to report under either of those items.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Okay, we'll have a moment of silence there and then the flags will move. Senator Armando, I'll have you lead us in the salute. Liz, could we please have the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Thursday, June 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, please turn off all cell phones.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions, counsel?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I would like to pull E1 for discussion. And I would also like to move up committee appointments, which is item K1 and 2.
Okay, can we do that after the Army Week proclamation?
Okay.
And I'd like to pull item 10.
Okay. E10?
Item 10, or was that on?
E10.
E10, nice.
Counsel, anyone else? Okay, so we're going to start off with the Army Week proclamation and we're going to present it to Sergeant Kenneth Rolle and the other gentleman that is with you. If you could tell us your name, please, we'd appreciate that.
Sergeant Marcus.
Marcus. Read this to you, okay? Come up here, we don't bite our problems. Okay. Whereas the United States Army was established by the First Continental Congress on the 14th day of June 1775, and whereas the United States Army exists to defend the freedom of our citizens and our nation's security's interests, and whereas many citizens of Galt have served their nation and given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedoms and members of the United States Army, and whereas it is proper to recognize the United States Army annually on its birthday and to thank those who have served and those who are presently serving. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Galt, California, does hereby proclaim June 9th through June 15th, 2013, to be United States Army Week in Galt and encourages all citizens to express gratitude to those who have served and those who are now serving to protect our nation and its freedom. I just want to add that I think that we should thank them every day. And would, either of you like something to thank, or?
On behalf of the United States Army and United States Army Recruiting Command, I'd like to thank United States Army, fellow City Council members on your continued dedication, the United States Army, letting us come into your city and talk about the Army to individuals. We really appreciate it and I'd like to continue our efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All righty, Liz, K1 and 2, please. E1 and 2, oh, K1 and 2, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Um...
I'm moving ahead.
We actually have a vacancy on the Youth Committee. And we do have one letter of interest. This vacancy is either Councilmember Powers or Councilmember Cruz, I believe, if I'm right. Lost me. There we go. Councilmember Cruz or Mayor Powers to make an appointment. We have one letter of interest from Winona Cassidy. At this time, well...
We'll look for a... A point clerk?
Sure, one of us move and the other one seconds, and that'll be good.
I move Winona to be accepted.
Okay, I second.
You still have one to go.
And we're looking for someone else.
That's right.
We still have a vacancy.
In the Galt Center.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just as a point of clarification, Cruz's appointment was that?
That's, I'm putting it to Cruz.
Does the dinner require a second, right?
Right. Okay, vote. You ready for the vote, Mayor?
Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
The next one, I actually, I'll turn this over to Councilmember Payne. It's for one, we have one student vacancy.
Angelica Martin.
Angelica Martin.
Yeah.
Is she here?
She is not here, sadly. But her application shows her as a very worthy student. She's a senior. And we had one of our other seniors that dropped out because she's in FFA and it was going to be a conflict. So Angelica Martin was selected to replace her if the council approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Liz, could you please read the public comments?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the City Clerk. Dan Meno? No? Okay. He wants to speak on an item on the consent calendar, should I pull it off?
Um, yes.
Well, then I would like to ask council to pull off item 4 and 10.
It's 10 already, so, okay. So we'll speak on...
We're going to pull 4, I'll call you up under the item. Okay, Al Baldwin.
Was either on 10, 4 and 10?
4 and 10.
Thank you.
Good evening. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and all the smiley faces, well, most of them are smiling, uh-huh. Pierre, I'm here on behalf of the Galt Area Historical Society. I'm the president right now. And I came here to thank the council and especially Kurt Campion and Mary Lou Powers for helping and assisting hang the plaques in the four different areas. It went extremely well. We appreciate all the help and the council's effort, too. I emailed you pictures, you probably didn't get them yet, but I did email you a big thank you and with the pictures that were taken, there's some of them. And it's nice to work with a council that is community-minded. It's really great. And while I'm on this one here, in three weeks approximately, the money that you graciously gave the Historical Society will be putting up this, we call it a barn shed, in about three weeks. So the process is working, the county's money, the city's money is all starting to come together and we're going to have a beautiful barn put up. And at the end of July, we'll probably announce it by then, but we have a snip and snack. So get ready for that promotion, I'm going to be pushing that one. But I want to thank you all, really, for all the help and assistance you've given us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Al, thank you.
The Cool Truck Show gentlemen, would you like to come up?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody, Bob Hitchcock from Cherokee Truck Parks in Stockton. Just wanted to come up to the city tonight and thank everybody for all the great support we have for our truck show this year for Shriners Children's Hospital. We had 97 paid entries, a lot of fun. Everybody loved the city of Galt and is your air conditioning on?
I'll start you, too.
But it was, we had a good turnout this year. Everybody had a, everything great to say about the city of Galt. They meant to bring one of the magazines up with an article in there about the city of Galt in the show, but I went off and forgot it. But I would like to, along with my, so I'm going to wait on this. I'm going to let the Shriners step up the plate here because they have a little something to donate to your Parks and Rec Scholarship Fund after the show.
Every year, we take half the gate money, the gate money for the entrance for the people who come to see the truck shows and see the light show at night. Anyhow, half of that gate money, this year was $1,159.
Wow.
Half of it comes to you guys for the Galt Athletic, or wherever it is. Parks and Rec Division. Anyhow, this is...
Those are our scholarship program.
You guys earn this, where does it go?
Love that, Armando.
Finance director.
Finance first.
Yeah, just keep it away from you.
The Shriners' system, all the good that we do for America's kids, we need support from the community like you guys and the people in Galt. And we love them, I'm a Galt guy, too, so Galt's fabulous. Thank you.
We look happy to hear.
Recognize all over the United States and basically the world this year again through my one side and through their one side, through the Shriners Children's Hospital, saying everything we could about the city of Galt. And on behalf of myself and the Shriners and everybody else in the trucking industry that participated, I have a feedback.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Good for you, sir.
I'll take it.
Okay. I couldn't take off.
No, stay away from that.
You want me to read it? 2013 Cherokee Truck Parks, Shriners Hospital, Cool Truck Show, Galt, California, an appreciation to the city of Galt. Rockwood, the ultimate choice. Thank you very, very much.
These are the plastic stands that go in the back, so you can stand it up, pre-stand it.
Okay. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, guys, thank you very much. See you next week.
Hope nobody minds, but we did bring the Peterbilt up tonight and it's kind of the main show, what we added to the show, so when I leave, you plug your ears because I'm a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Christine Carly, or Kylie, sorry, and Sierra Robertson.
Yeah, I think cookies here.
Hi, I am Christine Robertson. I'm here representing the Girl Scouts, the Dry Creek Service Unit District. We represent the Girl Scouts in Galt and Walnut Creek and Herald. And I'm here tonight on behalf of our service unit to present to you a little thank you gift basket, which I'm sure will be the best prize of the night. As you know, the Girl Scouts is a nonprofit, we're completely run through volunteer work and we wanted to really appreciate the city and recognize the city for letting, allowing us to use the community centers, the parks, and all of that, and all the help that you guys give us every year. So on that note, Sierra and Kylie will...
Okay.
Freeze out the cookies.
Cookies.
And we'll let you guys divvy up however you want, but...
Thank you, Christine.
See you later, Tom.
Chocolate ones too, over here. Keep chocolate away from Mike.
Okay, that's all the speaker sheets?
Anybody else that I missed?
Two legs, okay.
She doesn't want me breaking into them, you know.
Okay, now on the information and consent calendar, we'll start with, we'll go down the row with number one, Liz.
Okay, I would pull, I asked council to, I'd like to break these out for a vote. The minutes of the special and regular meeting of May 21st and the special meeting of May 28th for the first vote and for the second, to take a separate vote on the minutes of the meeting of May 13th. So first, council will vote on special and regular minutes, approval of the special and regular minutes of May 21st and the special meeting of May 28th.
Okay. Do I have a...
Sub move, second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Next, I ask for approval of the meeting minutes for the meeting of May 13th, 2013. Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Oh, I didn't hear Mike, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, number four, someone on the, we got on the speaker on that. We have a speaker on that and Jason, are you going to kind of clarify? Do you just want to clarify, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our finance director to give a brief report.
Oh, would you like us to go ahead and present a staff report then on that one? A verbal staff report? Is that, I don't know if there was a specific question?
Specific question, or just wanted to go through the report?
Okay, we'll go ahead and Matt, you can come on up and...
Just general summary of what it is.
On the appropriations, okay. So Matt's prepared to give a verbal staff report on that item. So with that, it's Matt Warren, Analyst with the City.
Evening, everyone. So the appropriations limit, it's imposed by propositions 4 and 11 from the state and it restricts the amount of revenue that can be appropriated every year from tax revenues. So not all revenues are restricted by the limit, only those from taxes. And it's based on the 1978 to 79 fiscal year and it's increased each year with, using the population growth and inflation. So the 78, 79 base year, the limit was 3,100,000 approximately. And using the various calculations, the appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2013, 14 is $73,796,012. It's expected that the city of Galt won't remain below the stated limit because last year, we were below the limit by over 60 million. So it's just put in place to make sure that we don't overtax the citizens. Do you have any questions about it?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to accept number four?
Motion for Cruz.
Call for the...
One second.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor, Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And Kurt, number 10?
I just wanted to pull off the consent in case there was anyone in the audience who had comments on the budget adjustments. Council had a special meeting on that and reviewed it in detail, but it was really more for the benefit of the audience since it was on the consent calendar, so that was the only purpose.
If anybody would like me to give a brief report, I'm happy to do that.
I think, I think that's probably a good idea.
Sure. As Councilmember Campion mentioned, we did have a budget workshop with the City Council on May 28th. We went through the details of each of the departmental budgets, looked at the revenues, the expenditures and all the various funds of the city. And we're in the middle of our two-year budget process, so this is a mid-year revision. What we do is we take a look at the current year and make adjustments based on things that happened in the year and then look to next year and make adjustments or make recommendations with the council on things that we see as changing from what was adopted last year. We, the current two-year budget was adopted on June 19th of 2012. Again, the recommendations, recommended adjustments were presented to council on May 28th. There were no substantial changes recommended by the City Council at that meeting. There were two recommended changes presented by staff at that meeting. Both are attached to the staff report. In addition to what's attached to the staff report tonight is Schedule 4, which is, shows the revenue appropriations of all the different various funds in the city. The two changes to the budget were presented on May 28th. It was in addition to what was included in the original packet that the public can see online. It was attached to the packet tonight, but I can go over that briefly with the City Council. The first one was to add $2,000 to fund a volunteer luncheon. It's being scheduled for September for our various committees and commissions and so forth that volunteer for the city. And the second one was just a change from the Planning Department moving $40,000 for consultant services for the housing element, for the zoning matrix update. Currently, that money is in the current year budget. We're not going to be able to get to it all this year, so that money is recommended to be moved into next year's, the fiscal year budget. So those are the two recommended changes we presented to the council at the last meeting. Other than that, there's no other changes, other than what was presented previously to the City Council. And the recommendation is that the council adopt this, adopt the resolution amending the 2012, 13, and 13, 14 budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? It's going to be second.
Second.
Any other further discussion? Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz? Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And now for the rest of the consent calendar, could you please read them, Liz?
I can. Number two, we have nine items, 10 was pulled. Item number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, cost road property grazing, cost property grazing lease. Number four, we discussed. Number five, the approval of the Army Week proclamation. Number six, authorized renewed designation of the Sacramento Regional Recycling Market Development Zone. Number seven, approval of the Treasurers Report for the period ending April 2013. Number eight, Clerk Administrator Merit Increase. Number nine, Measure R Oversight Committee Annual Report. And we discussed number 10.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Any more discussion, counsel? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're at the 2030 General Plan Update, the 2008 to the 2013 Housing Element, and that's to you, Sandy. Okay, what's to you, Chris?
That'll be me. Good evening, my name is Chris Haraya, Senior Planner with the City's Community Development Department. The item you have before you is the 2008 to 2013 Housing Element Update. We'll be asking you tonight to adopt the CEQA Initial Study Negative Declaration and approve the amendment to the Galt 2030 General Plan by adopting the 2008, 2013 Housing Element. Before discussing the Galt Housing Element, I want to give you a brief background on the Housing Element. Many of you, this will be repetitive for, because you were at a recent workshop that really went over not only the Galt Housing Element in detail, but also the requirements of a Housing Element. As you may recall, the Housing Element is one of the seven mandated elements of the General Plan. It's the only element that is required to be updated on a regular basis and approved by an outside agency. The California State Department of Housing and Community Development, Housing and Community Development, or HCD, reviews all state housing elements for consistency with state law and certifies each that it determines meets all of the requirements. The purpose of a Housing Element is to ensure that local governments adequately plan to meet the housing needs of all the people within the community, regardless of their income. A Housing Element will have four main components. The Resources and Constraints Analysis will study the city's inventory of land suitable for residential development and its development capacity. It will also review possible constraints such as land use controls, development fees, processing impairment procedure, code enforcement, and on and off-site improvement standards. This analysis will determine if these items create barriers for, to provide housing. The Housing Element also contains the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA, which is the city share of the region's projected housing needs. The regional share includes all affordability levels of housing. The policy programs are policies and goals with specific actions to support the housing goals. And the review of past performance to do just that, it will review the city's performance of the past policy programs. Staff started working on this Housing Element way back in 2007. Community outreach and review of the city's existing housing needs were completed at that time. The draft was completed and sent to HCD in early 2011. HCD commented shortly thereafter and staff has been working on a response since then and finally received approval from HCD in February of this year. This cycle Housing Element was officially due in 2008, but it's been delayed for a number of reasons. While much of the legwork associated with the element began in 2007, we couldn't complete it until the 2030 General Plan, the General Plan was finished because the Housing Element has to be consistent with it. In addition to this delay, the HCD comment letter took a little bit more time for us to address. The next handful of slides will show some of the Galt Housing Element contents. The city has been able to demonstrate that it can accommodate its allocation of housing units. In addition, our development permit process does not create unreasonable restrictions to the cities to accommodate affordable housing, as illustrated by affordable housing that's been constructed over the past few years. Galt zoning regulations did pose a constraint to the development of emergency and transitional housing. Though emergency housing is conditionally permitted in the light industrial and public quasi-public zones, the city is required by law to designate a zone where it is allowed by right. In addition, no provision exists for transitional housing and, again, by law, we're required to designate it as a zone where it is allowed by right. The time required in the city for development approval is not generally a constraint or a substantial cost to housing developers. Another component of the element is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. The table on the screen shows the RENA allocation for this cycle. The total allotment is 684 units. 635 were from this cycle RENA and 49 units were rolled over from the previous cycle. The chart also shows a total of 447 housing units produced, with the bulk of them being accounted for in the above moderate category. The last column on the right shows the remaining need. It includes a breakdown of affordability. And as you can see, we've satisfied the above moderate allocation. The city is not required to build the remaining need of the RENA allocation. We just have to provide adequate sites with no barriers so that they can be constructed. And the city has adequate sites to meet the remaining need. And the city has adequate sites to meet the remaining need. We meet the remaining need of our affordable requirement with our high-density residential Housing elements are also required to contain policy programs. The two thousand and eight, two thousand and thirteen housing element has six goals and twenty-five policies. Each of the policies and goals has specific actions to accomplish that task, and the screen shows a few of them. And as you can see, we have action items to address the emergency and transitional housing issues that I mentioned on slide five. And the remaining part of the housing element is a discussion on the city's accomplishments from the previous cycle. The accomplishments include, but are not limited to, including density bonus into the zoning code and the housing projects mentioned on the screen under Policy Three. A CEQA initial study negative declaration was prepared for the project. It showed that adopting the housing element will have no adverse impact on the environment. The document was available for public review from March twenty seventh to April twenty sixth, and we received one comment letter. It was from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board and was general in nature and does not require a response. And the final step for this housing element is for it to be sent to HCD for formal certification, providing, of course, you adopt the negative declaration and the housing element. And that concludes staff presentation. We recommend that the council conduct a public hearing to receive testimony and that you approve the CEQA initial study negative declaration and approve the amendment to the Galt two thousand and thirty general plan by adopting the two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen housing element. And staff will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to public hearing, and I'll ask council after if they have any comments. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, I'm going to close it. Council?
Yeah. Did you have a question? Oh, on the, on the high density, the city doesn't have to come up with a separate zoning classification and additional land use classification to meet the twenty-four, up to the twenty-four. We're going to modify the existing R three, is that it?
We didn't have to do that. HCD accepted the density range of the current general plan, which is fourteen to twenty-four units. The zoning code has the minimum requirement of the fourteen units, but it refers back to the general plan for maximums. So today, a housing developer can come in and build up to twenty-four units on our, on the R three.
On the R three, consistent with that.
Right, without any zoning code update or general plan amendment from us.
That's good.
Can't say I know for certain why they changed their position, but we were very happy they did.
Very good, very good. You convinced them. You wore them out.
I don't think it was.
You wore them out, you wore them out.
I think it was a combination of all the other jurisdictions complaining about the minimum requirement.
Right, I remember when that came down.
That's really the only question I have.
Councilmember Cruz?
I'm good.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
I was pointing to Kurt.
Oh, okay. Could I, would you read the recommendation, please?
Conduct a public hearing to receive testimony and adopt a resolution approving the California Environmental Quality Act initial study negative declaration and approving an amendment to the Galt two thousand and thirty general plan adopting the two thousand and eight through two thousand and thirteen housing element.
So move.
Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
And now we're, now we're going to the City Council office, discretionary funds, and that's you, Councilmember Campion. Oh, I'm sorry, oops. I did. Sorry, Jason.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
No problem. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item is the recommended two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen capital improvement program, budget adjustments. This is a annual process that we go through to update the city's capital improvement program. City's capital improvement program contains funding and designated revenues to build all the infrastructure in the city. It includes seven different categories, general improvements, parks and recreation, transportation, water, wastewater drainage, and equipment. Current five-year CIP was adopted by the City Council last year on June nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Staff presented the recommendations for the CIP update to the Planning Commission on May ninth. The Planning Commission adopted a resolution finding to propose CIP to be in conformance with the city's adopted general plan as required by government code section six five four zero one and six five four zero two A. Staff presented the recommended adjustments to the council at the same budget workshop on May twenty eighth. Three minor changes were recommended at that budget workshop that were, that were presented by staff and are attached to the staff report this evening. All funds are balanced for both fiscal years. Adjustments are reflected in the revised Schedule Four that we just talked about under the budget, including with the operating, included with the operating budget staff report. Staff's recommendation is that the council conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty thirteen, twelve, thirteen through two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. And a public hearing is required for this because of Government Code sixty-six thousand, which requires a public hearing when it comes to appropriation of a CIP relating to developer impact fees, which is the requirement here, not the requirement under the operating budget for CIP as a separate legal requirement that a public hearing be conducted. So it's been noticed and is now ready for the council to open a public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to open it for public hearing and then come back to the council again. Anyone in the audience want to speak on the capital improvement project budget adjustments? Okay, I'm going to close it. Council? Okay, can you read the recommendation, please?
Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, Councilmember Campion.
Yes, the item for you tonight, and I'd like to explain it a little bit. It says rescind approval of five hundred dollars for military banners, which was approved on December eighteenth. The reason I'm requesting that to be rescinded is that, Mark, how much money do you still have in there to expend?
About twenty-two hundred? About fourteen, fourteen hundred.
Forty hundred dollars. And it's unlike, it's unlikely I was advised by the city clerk that we would be able to spend that money. So that was the purpose for the rescission. What I would like to do is reappropriate that next fiscal year to the Horizon Carnival and the Senior Holiday Lunch. The Horizon, they had made an application under the, I don't know, lack of better revenue sharing for.
Community benefit funding.
Community benefit funding. So I think that they meet whatever the stated, what the stated requirements are for the discretionary fund expenditure, and I believe the Senior Holiday Lunch would also meet it. That's my request.
Councilmember Cruz, you have something?
I have a quick comment, because we received a couple of emails about this. Basically, they were derogatory in nature, but the bottom line is I really do appreciate Councilmember Campion coming forward and helping me out with the monies. And we spoke about it, and as you previously mentioned, I have ample monies to make me make it through the next fiscal, I mean, literally. So I have no issue with this, and I have no issue with this since it's my babysitting up there, my project, I don't see why anybody else should.
Don't notice. Anyone else? Okay.
Mayor, can I just make a comment, just maybe a clarification, maybe a question for Councilmember Campion? My understanding of the request is that the existing thousand dollars that's designated as discretionary funds in Councilmember Campion's line be carried over to next fiscal year for those two specific, for that specific project. That would be in addition to a thousand dollars that'll be available next year for additional projects.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure specifically it does require council action to carry the money forward from the current year into next fiscal year. So if Mr. Campion, if Councilmember Campion comes forward next year, and he will still have that additional thousand dollars to spend, which would be, which would be allowed if the council approves this tonight.
Quite frankly, it was a matter of timing. I just simply haven't had time, you know, been on here only six months, and next year I don't think I'll have a problem.
Can I have a motion? Page two.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Definitely, aye.
Mayor Powers?
I'm going to say yes on number one and abstain from number two because it is my organization, but I'd like to give you my heartfelt thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we're on the ordinance to increase the Planning Commission from five to seven members. Would you, I guess, do we have any discussion?
Would you like a staff report, or you just want, you'd like the council to go into?
Oh.
Send me, ready.
Okay.
And on that microphone, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, funny, or City Council. On this, in December of two thousand and ten, just as a kind of a rehash of a timeline, City Council formed an ad hoc committee to review and evaluate the rules and regulations for the city's committees and commissions. They brought their findings to City Council in May of two thousand and eleven, and council ultimately adopted an ordinance that made various amendments to the rules and regulations for the Planning Commission. It included elimination of the alternate position. That issue was then revisited about a year later in December of two thousand and twelve, and staff was asked to bring back a report to City Council to consider adding the alternative member back to the Planning Commission. The city attorney presented that report on February fifth of this year, outlined several possible ways that the rules could be rewritten to address how an alternate member could serve and vote on the Planning Commission. One of the options presented in the report was to forego the alternate position and just add two regular members to the membership of the Planning Commission that would be appointed by the full council and participate like other commissioners. City Council voted three to two to direct city attorney to prepare the ordinance that would add two regular members to the commission and introduced an ordinance in March of two thousand and thirteen. When that ordinance was considered for a second reading on March nineteenth, Councilmember Campion requested that City Council temporarily table the issue and refer the matter to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. The Planning Commission considered this matter at their meeting of May ninth and voted three to two to recommend that City Council leave the commission membership at five members. The discussion of the Planning Commissioners is sort of summarized in the draft planning, there's still draft planning commission minutes because we haven't had a June meeting yet, but they are attached to your staff report so you can see what the discussion was. And that concludes my report. The recommendation is either that the City Council adopts the ordinance that has already been introduced that would add the two at-large members. If you do that, we would ask that you approve a budget change appropriation that's also attached, or alternatively, you could take no action on the introduced ordinance, and that would leave the membership at five members. That concludes my report, in case you have any questions.
Questions? Mark?
Comment. I did review the minutes from the Planning Commission's meeting regarding this, and although some of them are a little misguided as far as their comments, a lot of them brought up some valid points. Although it is true, one of the meetings, there's only been one meeting canceled due to the lack of quorum, some meetings have been moved to accommodate the schedules of the commissioners. I'm hoping these were anomalies because, just like this council, they ask for positions, therefore, they should be setting aside that date every month for the meeting. If they can't, then they need to relinquish their positions to someone who can. They need to meet consistently so the public knows what to expect of them, just like they know what to expect of us when we meet. If there's nothing on the docket for them to do, my suggestion would be, and I, actually I made the suggestion to someone else within admin, and they said, "We're already doing it." I like it. That being, there's nothing on the docket, go over the general plan, go over current planning codes or code changes, stay up to date, because guess what? The economy's turning around, you don't want to get caught with your pants down. Again, these gentlemen have made themselves clear as to what they want. Okay, I'm going to hold them accountable for that action. What I'm looking at here, and this is my opinion, and I know I'm doing a one-eighty, it's kind of equivalent to the state telling us what to do. We want to do something, state says, "No, we're going to do it this way, whether you like it or not." I don't see this body doing that. If our commissioners, who we've assigned, take a position saying, "We can handle it," then they better damn well handle it. That's my two cents.
Okay, I have some two cents too, but mine comes back to when you had a staff meeting a while back, and this is not to put anybody on the spot, but remember when you wanted to have the zoning code amended where two out of three could be a majority because in case three out of five weren't there, your reasoning was that builders would have to wait another thirty days to get the zoning code approved? So that was brought up. There was, that says to me that there was some concern since you wanted two people to be able to be a majority to vote on coding. So I'm just bringing that back up because that was brought up by staff a while back. So that's my two cents worth.
But that would only be in the case of when you still had a quorum to conduct the meeting. In those cases, you'd still be conducting a meeting, they wouldn't be able to conduct business. It's similar to the City Council, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? The City Council would be in the same position. We couldn't conduct business either.
No, but what they wanted to do was to lower it so they could conduct.
Because I believe at one time it was that way, wasn't it, here in the city?
Yeah, I don't recall.
I think it was at one time. I think there was a, and actually, it was that way with the City Council when we were down to, I think, three City Council members, Liz, and do you recall that?
There was a time.
There was a time when that, when that provision actually didn't come into effect, and there simply was not, there were not three council members, or three, five council members, there were only three, I believe, sitting members.
Well, there are, there were our five planning commissioners, so when they thought, you know, so they were apples and oranges, kind of.
I don't know that I would take it as a criticism, but more of looking towards the future and remote possibilities that could occur so that the business could still be conducted. So I don't know that it was in, you know, I don't, I'm not speaking for staff, but knowing what the attendance has been, and in my case, you know, they talk about twelve years and thirteen years, and the staff report in ten years, I can go back twenty years, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know in the last twenty years that there was more than two, and I don't even know the second one. And I was principal staff to the Planning Commission, so I know that the issue is not one of attendance and the ability to have meetings. So I feel very confident in that area.
Yeah, I don't think that was the whole reason for all the discussion when we've been around and round with that. So, and I guess if there's no further discussion, is there a motion one way or the other?
Will there be, is there a motion necessary if we just drop the issue?
Separate ones here.
Frankly, the only motion that would be available tonight is to adopt the ordinance. If there's no motion to that effect, then the council could just move on to the next item and the matter would be considered dropped.
Okay, I move to adopt the motion from five to seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
No.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Cruz?
I have to say no.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, we're going on to Finance Department. I know, it's refinancing of various bonds of the city of Galt.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and community members. This evening, staff is presenting various actions relating to outstanding bonds of the city of Galt, and there are some changes to the recommendation. I will walk you through those, but it's based on some good news. Originally, we had anticipated using internal loan from the general fund to pay off or to refinance the wastewater treatment revenue bonds, but after further review based on the budget, we determined that we do have sufficient funds, so we will not be recommending an internal loan from the general fund for that item. So this evening, staff is recommending a couple of actions from council. One of them is the refinancing of the two thousand and one police building and related facility certificate of participation and the payoff of the nineteen ninety-nine revenue bonds, the wastewater refunding. Secondly, appropriate six hundred and seventy thousand from the general fund and assigned fund balance to refinance the police building certificate of participation using an internal loan. And thirdly, appropriate nine hundred and sixty-three thousand from the wastewater treatment plant expansion fund and reduce the appropriation from four hundred and sixty-two thousand six ninety to two hundred and sixty-five thousand in the capital reserve sewer fund to pay off the nineteen ninety-nine wastewater revenue bonds. And let me just go through this, just by way of background, so I can tell you what the analysis was that we actually performed. Over the past several years, we know that the city has issued various bonds to assist with financing of various improvements throughout the city, and on a regular basis, staff does evaluate whether or not it makes sense to refinance the bonds, and typically, the industry standard is if you can come up with a net present value savings of at least 3%, then it's probably a good time to refinance our existing debt. So the five outstanding bonds that the city currently has is the 2001 police building and associated facilities, the 1999 wastewater revenue bonds, the community facilities district 1988-1 bonds, assessment district 1999-1, and assessment district 1988-2. So the two bonds that we're looking at refinancing and are paying off this evening are the police facility and the wastewater revenue bonds, and I will talk about the other three bonds in just a moment as well. The 2001 police building and related facilities bond, basically, we issued $4.8 million in bonds certificates of participation back in 2001. There is currently an outstanding principal balance of $1,125,000 with a final maturity date of September 2016. The revenue stream to repay this debt is general government impact fees. Interest rates currently remaining are 4% to 4.35%, and the reserve fund is fully funded at this point. Annual debt services approximately $311,000. In regard to the wastewater revenue bond, the city issued $5 million.
Before you move on, not to interrupt, I'm sorry. So on the police building, that is where you want to use the $670,000 from general fund as a loan to retire that debt, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
On the wastewater revenue bond, we issued $5,280,000 of revenue bonds in 1999. It currently has the principal outstanding balance of $1,650,000 with the final maturity date of September 2016. The security for the repayment of the debt service for the bonds is limited to capital sewer impact fees and sewer service charges. The interest rates are 5.25%, and the reserve requirement of $471,345 is currently fully funded, and the annual debt service is, the average annual debt service is at just about $312,000. So over the past several months, as updated in our goals, we have advised council and the community that we have been working with an underwriter to review the feasibility of refinancing all of our outstanding debt. And we were trying to maximize the present value savings, the net present value savings, and we determined that instead of going through the public offering, which is what we've used in the past, which usually includes going out to the bond market, using an underwriter, selling to the investors, making a presentation and trying to get rating agencies to get an actual rating to our bonds, we actually decided that a private placement would be the most efficient use of, or the way to refinance this debt. And with the private placement, basically, we are using an underwriter, but when you do a private placement, we call them a placement agent, and we're working specifically with a bank. It's just like a loan when you go directly to that bank and you take out a car loan, or it's just a direct financing. You don't have to fund a reserve fund, you know what the interest rate is, it's fixed for that term, and we decided that this was probably the best avenue to pursue for refinancing of the police bond and the wastewater revenue bonds. So we talked to a couple of banks, one bank actually came back and gave us a letter of intent and told us that the cost of issuance would be about $15,000 and the rate would be quoted at 2%. Well, after further discussion, we decided that, which would be a savings, we're paying 5%, 4%, 2% looks very good, but then after doing further analysis, we thought, well, maybe we could save even more money by doing an internal financing. So we were able to talk to the city treasurer, as council is aware, we just recently amended the investment policy, and the strategy there is that we will go to a term of not exceed five years, and our current rate of return is just estimated at .4% for next fiscal year. So we thought, what if we were to do an internal financing? We don't have any cost of issuance because we're using city staff, so we're saving $15,000 to the police bonds and or the wastewater revenue bonds, and instead of receiving a .4% return on our investment, we're actually could charge 2%. We would be charging anything more like our other securities, but at least 2% was a fair amount that we would be getting, or that we would be paying any other loan, any other agency. So this evening, we were prepared to recommend the private placement, and after further analysis, we came back and said, we thought that the best and the most prudent financing would be that we would pay off the police certificate of participation using an internal loan from the general fund and to actually pay off the revenue bond in its entirety. And let me walk you through a little bit of each one of those financing structures. So on the police bond, as stated earlier, the principal amount is $1,125,000. We have accrued interest, we have the reserve fund that we'll utilize, and then we'll have about $665,000 that we'll still have to pay. So this is where the general fund, we are recommending that we use the general fund loan to finance that balance of $665,000. We would reduce the debt service from about $312,000 to $230,000 for the next three years, so the term has not been extended, we're still staying within that three-year term, and the general fund would actually end up with interest earning of $26,798. And that is an increase from our current investment portfolio of about $25,000. The general fund is, as of June 30, 2012, is $8.5 million. We estimate that as of June 30, 2014, 2014, that council just accepted this evening, the balance would be $6.4 million, recognizing that the reserve policies are still fully funded within that amount. In regard to the wastewater revenue bond, we are recommending that it be paid off in its entirety using the cash on hand from the wastewater treatment expansion fund, which are available for this purpose. Repayment is therefore not necessary. The fund balance in this account as of June 30, 2012, is $963,000. We would take that amount of money to pay down the principal amount of $1,650,000 and, which would leave us a balance at about $265,000. Currently, this was an oversight on my part, I was recommending $265,000, but we already budgeted $463,000 in next year's budget, so we don't need the full amount. So therefore, my recommendation was that we reduce the appropriation from $465,000 in the capital reserve sewer fund down to $265,000. So that is an amendment to my recommendation. The bonds will be called in their entirety as of September 2013 in just a couple of months. I will call the trustee, Bank of New York, and advise them of the early call. They'll run and notify the bondholders of that. And that basically covers the two bonds that I wanted to discuss in detail. The other bonds, we did look at the assessment district 1999-1, and the bank basically just did a pass on that one, so I am going to continue discussions with an underwriter and see if there might be some other interests out there doing a private placement and/or doing the public offering. On the other two districts, the CFD 88-1 and 1988-2, they are not being recommended at this time. There is a call provision of premium if we were to refinance the CFD 88-1, so it doesn't make it cost effective to refinance that district. And in regard with 88-2 assessment district, the credit risk, the delinquencies are high on that district every single year, and when we actually tried to see if there was any interest, the parties basically passed on that one, so the delinquencies were too high. There is one year out there outstanding, but there was no interest on that one. So we're not recommending any further action on those two districts, although we will be working with an underwriter to see if it makes sense to pursue the 1999-1 assessment district. So the fiscal impact this evening is that the estimated general fund interest revenue would be generated $26,797.55 as a result of the internal loan to refinance the police bond, which is an increase of just over $21,000 based on what's already in the budget, and that would be a rate of return of 2% rather than .4%. It would be that the annual debt service would be reduced from $312,000 to approximately $230,000 for the remaining three years, and that the annual debt service payment for the wastewater treatment plant would be eliminated after September 2013, and the annual debt service was $457,000, and it would be zero once the payment has been made this coming September. So with that, it is staff's recommendation that you approve the revised recommendation this evening, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
The revised recommendation is also a revised resolution that's been passed out.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I has mentioned it, but the sewer note, the important thing on that is that there's not going to be a requirement for the general fund loan that was recommended in the staff report because there's a sufficient fund in next year's budget to just retire that entirely, so.
That was out of the reserve?
That was, that was out of, that was, actually, it's already budget for next year for debt service payment.
Oh, I see.
And so we were just able to use that amount to, as part of the payoff in order to accomplish that. So the only general fund loan is the $670,000.
$670,000 to payoff the police facility, correct.
Well, not that it wasn't a bunch to take in, but we'll have you read the revised recommendations, please.
Okay, that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing, number one, the refinancing of the 2001 police building and related facilities certificate of participation and the payoff of the 1999 revenue bonds wastewater refunding. Number two, appropriate $670,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to refinance the police building certificate of participation using an internal loan. And number three, appropriate $963,000 from the wastewater treatment plant expansion fund and reduce the appropriation from $462,690 to $265,000 in the capital reserve sewer fund to pay off the 1999 wastewater revenue bonds.
Good. Any discussion?
Real quickly, if I'm looking at this correctly, this would save over the next two to three years about half a million dollars, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, that's significant. Very good job, very good job.
Well, we're actually, we're trying to look at, we were going through that based on the economy, and we've been working on with the underwriter for a couple of months, and it just seemed like by utilizing the private placement, we could take that reserve fund and spread it out, lower the annual payments because we weren't having the building, and now we're actually refinancing it out, picking it up a little bit, so we're a little bit behind, but yeah, so, thank you.
So move.
Got a second? Second. Call for the votes, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Okay, I now back to you again with the resolution approving an agreement with the public agency retirement services, proposed retirement healthcare plan trust fund administrative services and appropriation of funds.
This evening, we're going to have Mike Sylvia present that report.
Is that on?
Is that on?
Let me start over. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. Mike Sylvia, deputy finance director. This item is the consideration of an agreement with the public agency retirement services, otherwise known as PARs, for the setup of a post-retirement healthcare plan trust fund. Staff's recommending this item because staff's worked with an actuarial consultant who's determined the city's post-employment health benefit liabilities that are otherwise known as other post-employment benefits or OPEB. These are benefits other than pensions. Staff has researched OPEB trust fund provider options and determined that PARs is the best choice for the city's OPEB trust fund administration needs. Partnering with PARs provides a viable financing vehicle to invest these OPEB funds, which are really OPEB assets, and the assets work to reduce the city's OPEB liability going forward. By reducing that liability, the future retiree healthcare costs are lower and more manageable. Background, as far as why we're doing this, governmental accounting standards board a couple of years back passed Statement 45 or GAZB 45, which requires local governments to recognize actuarially estimated liability of their OPEB programs within the agency's annual financial report. If this liability does get too large, it can affect financial ratios and adversely affect the agency's creditworthiness. Previously, council directed staff to contract, as I said, with an actuarial consultant to determine the size of the city's OPEB liability and to provide funding options. Staff worked with BICMORE Risk Management Services on these goals. Last week, Paula presented a report about that, the findings on the BICMORE report. Milestones, as I said, were completed last week, and within the BICMORE report, the optimal long-term funding option was pre-funding the OPEB liability, and that does require the establishment of this trust fund to operate as both a holding account as well as financing vehicle, and then the annual contributions being deposited into the fund. The trust fund's annual pre-funding contributions, when they're coupled with the investment earnings, work to compound to the positive and reduce the long-term OPEB liability. Pre-funding these liabilities is suggested by multiple best practices and advisories from the Governmental Officers Association of United States and Canada as part of a financial system of long-term sustainability for local governments. As I said, staff researched the OPEB trust fund providers and discovered two primary OPEB trust fund providers in California, which was PARs and CalPERS. The two were compared, and PARs was superior in fund flexibility, they had multiple trust fund investment options, whereas with CalPERS, there's only one, one plan. Reporting frequency, PARs provides monthly statements, whereas CalPERS only reports to the agencies on a quarterly basis. IRS tax fund exemption confirmation, PARs has a letter from the IRS confirming their tax exemption status, whereas the CalPERS does not have such a letter. In terms of periodic actuarial analysis, similar to the BICMORE report, PARs only requires that analysis every three years, whereas CalPERS requires it every two years. Lastly, in terms of termination, if for some reason councillor staff were unhappy with this trust fund, PARs only requires a 90-day cancellation clause, whereas CalPERS requires a fixed three-year term. In terms of fiscal impact, the annual contributions for fiscal year 1213 and 1314, based on the BICMORE report, are about $65,000 a year. These amounts were included in the budget presentation that council heard last week as well as tonight's agenda. On top of those, there is the appropriation of fund, there are trust fund expenses, and there are three components to those. There are the administrative fees from PARs, which are estimated around $3,600 a year, asset management fees from Highmark Investment Management, that's estimated to be about $1,950 per year, and trustee fees from US Bank. However, the trustee fee is waived provided the city works with Highmark Investment for the investment management services. Assuming that is the direction council provides staff, then the total estimated fees for the trust on an annual basis is estimated to be 5550. So in summary, staff recommends approval of the agreement with PARs and appropriation of the trust fund expenses because of the compliance with GAZB 45 and it being the best long-term fiscally prudent method of managing future OPEB liabilities. Assuming city council approval, the city manager would serve as the plan administrator with the investment committee providing investment oversight. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to field any questions, and we do have Mitch Parker here from PARs as another resource.
Okay. Any questions, staff? I mean, I'll talk.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Call for a vote? Oh, wait. You did, Liz. You did or you don't?
Did not.
Yeah, okay. Let me make sure. Okay, Dr. Resolution authorizing adoption of the public agency retirement services, PARs, public agency's post-retirement healthcare plan. Number two, execution of the agreement with PARs by the city manager for participation in the PARs public agency's post-retirement healthcare plan trust as part of the city's retirement program, effective June 4, 2013. Number three, appointment of the city manager to act as the plan administrator for the trust with the city of Galt's investment committee to provide investment oversight. Number four, the plan administrator to execute associated legal and administrative documents on behalf of the city. And number five, appropriation of the $5,550 from general fund unassigned reserves for fiscal year 2013, 2014, trust administration and investment management fees.
Okay, Billy, do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Okay, now we're to Paula, the Galt Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding, Galt Public Service Unit Memorandum of Understanding, and the City of Galt Personnel Manual.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is really a follow-up item from our meeting last week when we discussed the budgets, and this was presented by staff and was brought, was recommended to be brought tonight for final approval, and as we discussed last week, we have met with the different bargaining groups, we have a recommendation for changes to the MOUs in the form of a side letter agreement for GPOA and GPSU, and then changes that would be placed in the personnel manual. So if you have any questions, we can, staff can answer them for you, otherwise, the recommendation, I won't repeat because I think, Liz, you might have to go through it, but it's kind of long. Sorry. Sorry.
Any questions, council? Liz, then could you?
Okay. Adopt the resolution approving the side letter agreement with the Galt Police Officers Association, GPOA Memorandum of Understanding for the period of July one, two thousand eleven through June thirty, two thousand fourteen. Number two, adopt a resolution approving the side letter agreement with the Galt Public Service Unit Memorandum of Understanding for the period of July one, two thousand eleven through July thirty, two thousand fourteen. Number three, adopt a resolution approving changes to the City of Galt Personnel Manual, and number four, authorize the city manager to sign the GPOA and GPSU side letter agreements.
Okay, do I have a motion, council?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, public work department's status report on mandatory commercial recycling in Galt.
A lot, Dolores Martinez of our staff is coming forward, just two quick introductory comments. First, we won't compete with finance for FaceTime tonight, I think they've done a good job of that. Uh, this is, uh, sort of a, an annual, first annual status report on a new government mandate from our friends in the legislature, uh, related to mandatory commercial recycling, and, um, uh, Dolores, if you could introduce our guest presenter tonight, Mr. Jack Fiore with, uh, California Waste Recovery Services.
You can just stand.
Yeah. I didn't know if you had any introductory comments on the issue, so.
Okay, thank you, uh, I'm Jack Fiore, I'm the general manager with California Waste Recovery Systems. Have a short PowerPoint tonight, um, to talk about with you, bring you a little update on mandatory commercial recycling. Um, we, I was doing the math sitting out here, we've been talking about recycling since nineteen eighty-nine when Governor Duke Magian signed AB nine thirty-nine. Um, if we can go to the first slide? Perfect. Signed in nineteen eighty-nine, um, had two key factors everybody should remember, twenty-five percent diversion, we needed to achieve that by nineteen ninety-five, and the goal was to achieve fifty percent diversion by the year two thousand. Diversion was the material that didn't go to the landfill, was diverted from the landfill. And the objective of that was pretty simple in concept, and that was, we want to throw away half of what we used to throw away. Uh, this turned out to be much, like a lot of things, turned out to be much more complicated than, than initially probably conceived to be. Uh, measuring diversion is not as simple as it once was, because when you don't buy something or don't throw something away, or it becomes lighter, it, you, you don't get credit for what you don't throw away, or what you do recycle. Uh, currently, Galt is, uh, most currently measured in two thousand six, and I'll talk a little more about that in a minute, Galt was at a fifty-seven percent diversion rate, so the City of Galt is, is doing very well at diversion. Um, currently, actually, we're a little better than that, that's okay. Currently, um, we're at a, uh, they, they now measure a little differently, and in fact, I will talk about that as we go a little deeper into this. Uh, six years ago in two thousand six, Governor Schwarzenbeger signed AB thirty-two, it was a scoping plan with two key elements, uh, it was, uh, to address global warming solutions, and it was to reduce climate-changing greenhouse gases. This, this, um, bill was, was brought forward and adopted by CARB, California Air Resources Board, and they were, um, the lead agency at that time. Continuing on, uh, to AB three forty-one, perfect, that was adopted by Governor Brown, or signed by Governor Brown, I should say, in October of two thousand eleven, it was actually, uh, framed up and adopted, uh, about a year ago in two thousand twelve, uh, June, I believe. It had a dual purpose, probably had a triple purpose, actually. Part of it was to take some teeth away from CARB and put it back into CalRecycle, but there were two key elements to it. The first was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, uh, by five million metric tons of carbon dioxide by the year twenty twenty, and the, the, the second, and, uh, the one that everybody will more easily identify with, was that they wanted to divert waste from the landfills in, in a greater sum, they wanted to divert seventy-five percent of what goes to the landfills, and, and they set that, uh, they set the target out, uh, a good number of years, in that when it was signed, there was almost eight years, about seven and a half years of time available to accomplish that, but as, as you can imagine, every percent becomes, uh, they're, they're no, they're no longer linear when you get after about thirty, probably, and as you get from fifty-seven to fifty-eight, fifty-eight to fifty-nine, it gets a lot harder to accomplish, so it is a very good thing that they, they provided us or allowed the amount of time they, they did, because this is gonna take a little while. Um, commercial recycling as it pertains to bring it back home to Galt, commercial recycling, uh, has, has two key elements. Uh, commercial recycling, let me talk for just thirty seconds about that. In nineteen eighty-nine, AB nine thirty-nine, really focused on residential recycling, and it worked. Residents recycle, they get it, their kids get it, second-generation people are recycling, we almost don't need to talk about it. Uh, commercial recycling never really, um, uh, met with the same enthusiasm there, for, for any business, there has to be some kind of an economic incentive, and frankly, that's a difficult, um, uh, item to accomplish, because the landfill rates are not very expensive. So, when you figure what it costs to take something to the landfill versus what it costs to recycle something, if the landfill was a hundred dollars a ton, it would make a lot more sense to recycle than when the landfill's thirty dollars a ton. Hence, the, the efforts in recycling in, at the commercial level, um, weren't met with the, with same enthusiasm that the residential was. AB three forty-one is, is, uh, attempting to, to dedicate some effort in that direction. It is mandatory for all businesses to generate more than four cubic yards or more trash per week to recycle, and there's a period at the end of that sentence, and that's all it says. It doesn't say what recycling is, it doesn't say half, it doesn't say seventy-five percent. They're looking to the communities, they're looking to the private haulers, to figure out how to make workable solutions for your community, and, and that's probably a blessing and a curse, but I think on the front end at least, it's a good blessing. Uh, currently, in the City of Galt, there are a hundred and eighty-four businesses that fall into the four yards or more category, and a hundred and fifty-nine of them are compliant, so on a percentage basis, I think more than eighty-five percent of them are, are currently compliant. We visit each one of them each year, uh, excuse me, we visit each one of them every eighteen months to, uh, re-evaluate what they're throwing away, we, we do that to encourage participation, we do that to provide educational materials, look for other options. The second part of the commercial recycling ordinance that's new, uh, has to do with multifamily dwellings, and multifamily dwellings, uh, of complexes of being five or more units, again, mandatory recycling, doesn't tell you what mandatory means, doesn't tell you thirty gallons of this and sixty gallons of that, but it is mandatory at, at multifamily units. Currently, there are thirty locations in Galt that are affected by the mandate, fifteen are compliant and fifteen are not. Uh, I would say, I believe more than ninety percent of them, at one time in the last ten years, have tried to recycle, and it's, it's difficult with the, um, the transit population's difficult with, uh, twelve people using the same four-yard container, and some, but one of you's not doing it right, but we don't know which one it is, uh, and there just is, is less interest than maybe there is at home. We continue to work on that, we continue to vis, visit with those people and provide educational materials, but it's definitely a work in progress. Um, AB three forty-one compliance, we met with, uh, City of Galt and CalWaste met with CalRecycle two weeks ago, and, uh, had a good meeting, uh, they were, CalRecycle's very pleased with what's going on in the City of Galt, and did not have any significant concerns to present, and that kind of brings us to the last slide and why they were as pleased, actually, we're gonna just go to the last slide, excuse me. There we are. Um, this is a five-year history lesson in the City of Galt, residential, commercial, industrial, all, all categories, all types, and what you can see here is the trash continues to drop off incrementally, probably does that for a number of reasons, people, maybe during the depression, were spending a little money, less money, uh, there were, uh, some people that, uh, were residents five years ago that aren't residents today because they've moved out and moved on. Uh, you can see a little bit of that similarly in the recyclables row, uh, we were at twen- almost twenty-four hundred tons five years ago, we're at two thousand tons today. Uh, we do know that things are, the two things that are different now is, uh, plastic bottles, for example, uh, there used to be, uh, something like thirty-one of those in a pound, there's thirty-seven or thirty-eight of those in a pound now, they're thinner, they're not as thick as they once were, so you can throw the same amount away, but it won't be as much weight, same screw with aluminum can. Um, green waste is pretty flat, it looks like we had a couple wet winters in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, but otherwise, uh, you're talking about very, very minimal deltas. Um, total tonages, if you look at the total, uh, it's, it's, it's dropping, and dropping is, is good, uh, gen- generally as a rule. These last two rows are where I want to camp for a half a minute. Residential disposal target, this is what CalRecycle is using now, because they don't really know how to make this diversion thing work, because of the fact that the bottle's not as heavy as it once was, and, uh, newspapers don't have five sections, they have two sections, and people aren't advertising in the newspapers like they were once more on Sunday, so there's not, as ma- there's not, there's less going to the landfill, but the numbers don't reflect that it's, that that's a good thing. So they now measure by residential disposal target of four, of pounds per person per day. The goal for Galt, and every, every municipality's different, the goal for Galt is four point one pounds per person per day, and you can see that we're between two and a half pounds and two point nine pounds. So, the theory is that pounds per person per day should be a target to get you about fifty percent, and we are well below the fifty percent maximum, which, if you turn that upside down, means that we're probably up in the, in the mid-sixties, and, and so that was part of what made the, uh, lady from CalRecycle pleased. This is the last line, and, and the last comment I've got, is they also measure employee disposal. I don't know how they do this either, but they, they, uh, establish a baseline for each community. Galt's disposal target for employees is twenty-five and a half pounds per person per day, and you can see that, uh, in the last four years, Galt has fluctuated between seventeen point two and twenty point four is our high this year. So, again, we're twenty percent below the, uh, the targeted maximum, so that's a very good thing. Questions?
When people take, um, items to these, these recycling centers, do we somehow, does Galt get credit? How does that work?
The way that works is the recycling center, um, he has two, uh, transactions. One is the, the plastic bottle that he bought, and he, he gets the money for that from the plastic bottle recycler, but he also has a transaction with the State of California Division of Recycling, and they pay him back for the redemption side of that. So the way he gets hold is forgetting his money for the scrap, his money for the redemption, and those, this facility in Galt, for example, is in Galt, so Galt gets the credit for the fact that the materials are coming to a facility here in town.
I don't understand the idea of employee.
I wish I could, I wish I could, yeah, that's, it, it, no, we're kind of laughing.
Chuckling, because, well, many of us, we're trying to figure out the reg, they're not even sure how they came up with the target, so we're chuckling at sort of the, the bureaucracy of it all.
Yeah, they, it's, I guess the best way I can explain it is, besides saying I don't understand it, is that in Sacramento County, uh, excuse me, San Joaquin County, I happened to be looking at something for them the other day, their pounds per person per day on the residential side is eight and a half, the City of Galt's is four point one. Now, I can't explain what would be different in what that jurisdiction from this jurisdiction that would cause the allowable to be in San Joaquin County unincorporated nearly twice, actually, more than twice the way yours is. They, they, I, I've been told they calculate this based on, uh, a hundred factors, including tax base and income and median, uh, median income, and, and a lot of the things that they, they, uh, develop other matrices with or, or, uh, things, it's, it's a, I'm not sure it's a black box, but I haven't met anybody yet that could explain it to us. But because I, because we're doing so well, I've, I haven't, I haven't pushed too hard. Any other questions?
Um, excuse me, the Galt recycling, they have to have certification by the state, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does that also mean the, um, what I call the temporary recovery sites, uh, such as, uh, on, uh, property of, uh, uh, more or less, which is in a parking lot? And there's another one by, uh, is that one behind?
Right, yeah.
Call super, yeah.
Yeah.
They have to abide by the same rules, correct?
Yes, they can pay different amounts, but the, the rules that govern them are the same.
How, would that, okay, so I won't ask you about the pay structure then?
Well, it, real simply, the, in my example, they, they, they all get the same CRB back from the state.
Yeah.
They each have their own arrangement for selling on the scrap side, and, uh, the scrap value of the plastic or the glass bottles or the aluminum can, and they've made their own, two things have happened, they've made their own deals with a broker to buy their product, and they themselves decide what percentage they're willing, of that amount that they're willing to give back to their customer.
Right, okay. All right, that's it.
Anyone else?
On the, how you doing, Jack?
Good, thank you.
Um, on the residential side, target, th- this deals just with the multifamily, is that what you're saying?
On the pounds per person, is that?
On the pounds per person?
No.
Or that has nothing to?
It is, it is, it is residence, it is all residence, so it would be single family, duplex, multifamily, that's the, the goal, the targeted goal for the City of Galt from CalRecycle.
So, uh, AB three forty-one, it didn't rescind nine, uh, nine thirty-nine?
It's, it's designed to, uh, its intention is to improve it, and when they figure, I was, I was telling, uh, Jason yesterday and Steve both, that, uh, we attended a meeting about, I think it was thirteen months ago, and they were working on this new formula, and they were gonna be ready to roll it out by, by about twelve months ago, and we still haven't seen it. They recognize that there's a problem with how to measure.
Yeah.
Success, or how to measure progress, for that matter. They have not come up with a, uh, solution, at least that they've released. They've kind of stopped talking, in two thousand six, they just stopped talking about fifty percent diversion and start talking in pounds per person per day. Uh, it was, it was kind of a non-event, and, and, um, uh, they, other than that they've acknowledged that, uh, as the pro- although the program is successful and the entire state of California is above fifty percent diversion, measuring diversion in that manner is not, um, is no longer the best way to approach it. I don't think they've said they made a mistake, and I don't think they made a mistake. In the beginning, if you had two things and you threw them both away, but then next time you only threw one away, then you, you had fifty percent diversion in that example, but...
So, so the pounds per, per person per day, that is divergent, that's not diversion, that's just what goes to landfill?
Those are disposal numbers, yeah, those are, the both pounds per person per day on the residential and on the business side are disposal maximums, if you will.
Okay, okay, okay.
Maybe I could help, I think your question is, we were talking about commercial recycling, and then all of a sudden, there's a residential target.
Yeah, excuse me.
That's just sort of a, a, an indicator of how overall the city's doing, and isn't driven by AB three forty-one, but felt it would be good information for you tonight.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
And we'll probably be bringing future annual reports back to you, because that's what the state wants us to do, is make sure our electeds know how we're doing with these programs, but no action tonight, this was informational.
Okay, so now we're gonna adjourn the city council meeting and convene to the Galt successor agency. Did I have the roll call, please, Liz? Board Member Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Uh, we're gonna adjourn the Galt successor and reconvene to the city council, and we're going, we already have the city clerk's report, but do you have anything else you want to ask Liz?
Um, no, it, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, the next meeting has been canceled, has been canceled, although on the calendar, it shows that there is a meeting. Uh, next time we walk, our next meeting, the chambers will look a little bit different, we're gonna be doing some remodeling, or updating.
All right. Um, comments by staff? Armando?
I would just like to remind, uh, council and staff to sign up for the five K ton run for the badge. for the badge. Still time to sign up and get your T-shirt. Also remind all your family to come and visit you and watch our fireworks here at the Galt Market Grounds. We'll be having the kid zone. Again, live entertainment with Four Barrel Band, our country fair at Chabola Center, and the fireworks in the pool. We'll bring more information next council meeting, but just wanted to remind you to make sure you get your registrations in for the 5K run.
Because it's coming fast. Fourth of July is just around the corner.
One month away.
Yep.
Good. We, just a note to council, we're going to be starting construction in the council chamber tomorrow. They're going to be making some improvements. This end of the chamber taking out some of the old 1970s wood molding and countertops, and so it's going to be some upgrades at the next council meeting, you'll notice. So looking forward to that.
Anyone else? Oh, geez.
I would like to tell everybody and also council that on Thursday, June 13, from 6:30 PM to 8, we'll be hosting a prescription drug presentation regarding the dangers and impacts of illegal prescription drugs, and how the kids are getting them out of the medicine cabinet and selling them on the street and all the rest of it. That'll be held at 446 Fairway Drive, which is the Horizon Church. We encourage everybody who has a question regarding that to come visit. And hopefully, we'll go away with some very useful information as far as how we stop the kids getting the prescription drugs. Another thing, on June 28, we will be starting the Special Olympics Torch Run from City Hall. It'll start at 7 o'clock in the morning. We'll end up running the torch to Rayleigh's, be picked up by motorcycle, taken to Elk Grove. They will run it a period, then it'll be taken, and it'll end up going all the way to Sacramento for the celebration up there at the Capitol. So we'd like to see everybody there at 7 o'clock in the morning. It is a very worthwhile event, and it's done by law enforcement officers, and we'll be carrying the torch that'll end up going to the Olympic Games in Davis, I believe it is this year.
I know you guys worked really hard on that, Special Olympics. Do you have something you want to say about a new dog?
And we have our second new canine. It was picked up, well, I shouldn't say picked up, because it's still going through training. But it was located and purchased last Saturday. His name is Jaxx. He's a year and a half old Malinois, and the handler will be Officer Carter.
That's really good news. Anyone else? Staff?
I have a comment. Just want to let council know that I did pass out a memo. At the last meeting, there was a question about the non-housing DDR, so I did provide an update to council, so I distributed that this evening.
Thank you. Staff, council? We'll start with you, Champion?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay, we're adjourned.